All right, good evening and welcome to the March 4th, 2025 meeting of the Hickory City Council. I want to welcome each and every one of you here this afternoon. At this time, I would like to call on our good friend, the Reverend Charles Kiker from Christ United Methodist Church, for our invocation. Reverend Kiker, thank you for being here this evening. If you would please, if you're able, stand for the invocation and remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Gracious God, we give you thanks for this gathering tonight. And Lord, I begin with a prayer of thanksgiving for the city of Hickory, and for its leadership, and for the county that we live in. It is no small measure that we live in a place, God, that seeks to honor you, that seeks to honor the principles that are laid out in the Judeo-Christian faith, to honor a God who has created us, and honor one another as your creation. And we're thankful, God, for what your servant John Calvin called sacred civility. It's where we each see a duty, a duty to our neighbor, a duty to our brother. And so, Lord, tonight, I'm surrounded by the men and women in uniform who protect and serve. So we ask your blessings upon our police department, God. We ask your blessings upon, Lord, all of the staff of the city who do so many things behind the scenes. And Lord, I ask your blessings, dear God, upon this city that it would seek to do your will. And tonight, especially the city council and our mayor, we pray, God, you would give them wisdom and guidance, Lord, and you would direct them. And as your servant Dwight L. Moody once said, "Reputation's who we are in the daytime, and everybody's looking. But character is who we are in the dark when no one's looking." So, Lord, help us to be men and women of character, to serve you, to serve one another. So in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I hesitated, waited just a minute. Usually Councilman Seaver comes in from a Kiwanis meeting, so I thought he may show up. He's not here yet, and Councilman Wood will not be with us here this evening as well. All right, at this time, we have some special presentations. I would like to call upon our police chief, Chief Reeve Bear, and Valdez Police Department Chief Mark Sharp for our first presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Wood, and Mr. Swanson. It brings me a great pleasure to be here tonight for a very special and unique recognition. Tonight, we are going to present the Hickory Police Department's Distinguished Service Citation for Valor to Master Police Officer Daniel Peacock, who's sitting here to my right, your left. This award is presented to an HPD employee who performs an act of heroism in the face of personal injury or risk to their life. The Distinguished Service Citation for Valor is the highest recognition that is awarded through the HPD Accommodation and Awards Program. This is also a historical moment, because this is the first ever Distinguished Service Citation for Valor that has been awarded to an HPD employee for an act that they did off-duty while unarmed and out of uniform. I learned of the events that led to this recognition when I was contacted by Police Chief Mark Sharp from the town of Valdez. And Chief Sharp is here with us tonight. I'm going to ask him to come to the podium now to share with you the events that prompted him to contact me. Chief Sharp?
First of all, I'd like to thank you, manager, mayor, councilman, and staff of the city of Hickory for allowing us to speak tonight and recognize Officer Peacock, or Investigator Peacock. I'm honored to recommend Investigator Daniel Peacock of the Hickory Police Department for a Distinguished Service Citation for Valor in recognition of his heroic off-duty actions. On December 22nd, 2024, at approximately 2:10 PM, Valdez officers responded to a stabbing on Eldred Street, where they found a 67-year-old female victim with knife wounds to her forearm and neck. Investigator Peacock, who happened upon the scene while off-duty, intervened immediately. Peacock was unarmed at the time, confronted the attacker, who was armed with an eight-inch butcher knife, and actively stabbing the victim, causing the suspect to flee. Peacock then called 911 and provided crucial first aid until emergency responders arrived. Security footage later confirmed the brutal nature of the attack, and thanks to rapid investigative efforts, the suspect was identified and arrested within 24 hours. Investigator Peacock's decisive intervention likely saved the victim's life, exemplifying extraordinary bravery and selflessness. The town of Valdez, the police department, its citizens, as well as the victim herself, are deeply grateful for his actions. His commitment to public safety, even off-duty, reflects the highest standards of law enforcement. I strongly support his recognition with the Distinguished Service Citation for Valor, and am grateful he is being recognized in the city he serves to ensure the city of Hickory is aware of the type of man you have serving. I'm really honored to recognize him tonight, and I hope that you feel the same way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief.
You heard Chief Sharp refer to Master Police Officer Peacock as investigator. When Investigator Peacock is not stopping crime in other jurisdictions, he serves at RPD as an investigator where he investigates crimes against children, which is one of the most difficult cases that we work. So, all around, he serves this community in an extremely extraordinary fashion. I'm going to ask, this time, the Master Police Officer Peacock join me at the podium. I'm going to step over here. I think I can still be heard. Once you turn to his credit, they were saying that fear is a reaction and courage is a decision. And your actions on December 22nd exemplify that statement. It is my privilege to present you with your Police Department's Distinguished Service Citation for Valor.
Well, on behalf, I know the chiefs have already recognized you, Officer Peacock, but on behalf of the city, myself, and the city council, we want to say thank you to you, not only you, but to your family for sharing you with us, and for all the other officers. I know, or I do believe that if any of our officers would have been in that same situation, that they would have responded the same. And you just happened to be there, and you responded as we would have expected you to. And we want to say thank you. We appreciate your service to not only our community, but to other communities surrounding us. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, we have another very special presentation. It's going to be from our Arts Cultural Kataba, formerly the United Arts Council of Kataba County. And we have also with us this evening Executive Director Ingrid Keller and past President-elect Catherine Rogers. So Catherine, I think you're going to be up, obviously, you're going to be up there first.
Yes, sir.
All right. You're ahead of the game. You're already at the podium.
All right. Good evening. I'm Catherine Rogers, the President-elect of Arts Culture Kataba, and the Chair of our Cultural Plan Leadership Team. It's a mouthful. As the cultural arm of the city of Hickory and all of Kataba County, Arts Culture Kataba led a county-wide planning effort that resulted in a 10-year strategic cultural plan. We are grateful for the time this evening to share this major undertaking with you. You just watched a video that shows the brand transition from our former look-and-name, United Arts Council of Kataba County, to our new DBA, Arts Culture Kataba. With our new designation, we are moving forward with a new commitment and energy to fully embrace cultural policies that affirm Kataba County as the vibrant crossroads it has always been. We had a lot of help throughout this process. If you happen to fill out a survey, attend a discussion, or participate in any way, please know that your contribution was valuable to our community's future, and we thank you. We are especially grateful to Dean Proctor, who, as our state senator, secured an appropriation for our organization to do this research. Our 23-24 Board of Directors gave a lot of extra time, especially those who served on our core leadership team. Our friends at the Western Piedmont Council of Governments served as our official data partner. Our leadership team was made up of leaders from business, culture, education, government, health, human services, philanthropy, religion, the media, tourism, and every community. We had a great deal of representation on our leadership team from the city of Hickory, including Mayor Hank Gess and Councilmember Charlotte Williams. Thank you. We engaged the services of Matarata Consulting to conduct the research and compile an internal strategic plan and operationalized cultural plan document. Alan Jackson from Jackson Creative and local historian Richard Eller put together our public-facing document, which can be viewed on our website at artskataba.org, or by scanning the QR code on your handout. We also worked with our local government partners to ensure that any recommendations coming out of this plan were relevant and actionable. Rodney Miller and David Leonetti were excellent partners in our asset map collection, so we want to thank them for this effort. And finally, our vibrant cultural organizations and creative individuals did the lion's share of the work on this plan, attending lots of meetings and providing the data. These organizations also provided pictures that depict the richness of our cultural scene, both in this presentation and in the planned document. Not only do arts and cultural organizations improve quality of life by giving our citizens opportunities to be creative, engaged, educated, and entertained, they're very important to our economy. As you may recall, when we presented to you last year, our most recent economic impact study found that arts and culture nonprofit organizations in Kataba County contribute to more than $53 million annually in economic impact. Knowing that arts and culture are good for our quality of life and our economy, we then wanted to know how to improve overall. We hired a consultant in August of 2023, and by September, we established a Strategic Plan Core Leadership Team. An internal scan of Arts Culture Kataba, one-on-one interviews, and an online assessment were completed by all board and staff. A 360-assessment report was then shared with the board in November. In January of 2024, we launched a community-wide process convening a 60-member leadership team, our Arts and Culture membership, United Arts Fund contributors, individual creative workers, and the interested public. Thirty virtual and onsite meetings involving more than 250 individuals were then held with county and municipal leaders and representatives from arts and culture, business, community organizations, economic development, schools, libraries, parks, tourism, youth services, aging services, and others. With the help of the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, four different surveys were created and distributed. The four surveys were: a quality-of-life public opinion survey, a youth quality-of-life survey, a survey for arts and cultural organizations, and a creative workforce survey. 4,746 responses were collected over a six-week period and submitted to the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, with 3,874 Kataba-based respondents, representing 2% of the county's population. We also managed to get 1% representation from all zip codes and demographics. We then held more than 100 community leaders, we had more than 100 community leaders participate in work sessions to vet and improve preliminary recommendations. And finally, the Board of Directors reviewed and ratified the cultural plan at their June board meeting. This process presented a new direction for Arts Culture Kataba with new vision and mission statements, and four strategic priorities to guide our organization. And our Executive Director, Ingrid Keller, will now tell you about each of these new priorities.
Okay, now we're going to see if I can click and do this at the same time. Thank you, Catherine. This research certainly taught us a lot about our community. We learned that our greatest weakness by far is that people in our community have a hard time finding out what arts and entertainment is happening. 40% of respondents to our public opinion survey said that it is not easy, it is difficult, or it is very difficult to find out what is going on. So we realized this is not a problem that is exclusive to our industry. Generally speaking, the way people get information has drastically changed. So while we realize this is a societal challenge, we still feel like we need to do something to try to help. So our first priority is to expand awareness. We want more participation, and we want arts and culture to be everywhere. To do this, we will work closely with local governments to incorporate the arts in their efforts to boost community vitality, enhance a sense of place, and contribute to livability. As a start, we created an asset map to level set where each municipality is and where it wants to go. We will help develop a central information system to promote entertainment opportunities. And in fact, this is the initiative that we are tackling first, and are pretty excited about it. Right now, we are in the discovery and development phase, but by July, we hope to be starting to roll out a new software application platform that we can share with you all in the future. We will also work with partners to develop a volunteer directory, and we want to enhance our online directory of arts and culture individuals, organizations, resources, and venues. Success of this initiative means greater awareness of arts and culture participation increases for both residents and visitors. Local government partnerships help build more welcoming, safe, and attractive communities, and residents love where they live. The arts have the capability to change lives for the better, but people have to know about them, which is why expanding awareness is so important. And our second priority is to reach more residents through strategic partnerships. We will collaborate with key community partners to see that creative opportunities are available to more residents of all ages, everywhere. Our organization's focus on grant-making in the past has caused us mostly to concentrate on serving directly to our cultural organizations. But we know that art happens outside of traditional circles, and we want to better connect our artists, creatives, and cultural organizations with the greater community. We want to work with youth and aging service providers on arts and culture programming and elevate parks and libraries as destinations for arts and culture experiences. We will strengthen the relationship of arts and culture organizations with area schools, practice intentional community building, and grow the value of arts and culture in the workplace. With all of this, plus expansion into health and human services, sacred spaces and faith communities, and local government, we see a lot of potential for arts and culture to reach more people. Our third priority is to continually improve arts and culture offerings. So we want to do this both through our grant-making and beyond, which is a change in how we've operated in the past. We will develop best practices to guide and strengthen both our local artists and our cultural organizations. We are currently working to refresh our grant-making structure in ways that incentivizes operating and programming excellence and rewards those who increase community connectivity and reach. We will also explore the creation of a shared services model. This is a sort of Salt Block 2.0, if you will. That will give us greater efficiency across the sector, and it will explore needs in clerical support and also shared systems and equipment. We will also explore the creation of programs to enhance community life and further ensure a welcoming atmosphere for both current residents and new immigrant communities. Success in this priority means improved professionalism, quality, access, and relevance in offerings that attract greater community investment, and expanded grant-making and stewardship that strengthens the entire sector's capacity. So while our first two priorities are more community-driven, focused on our core organizations and industry, our third priority turns more inward, making the sector itself stronger. And then now, this fourth priority focuses more on Arts Culture Kataba itself to ensure that we can operationalize this plan. So this fourth priority is to build capacity and investment in the arts and culture sector. We need capacity and sustainability and personnel, expertise, experience, and funding to implement the cultural plan. We have to keep our systems up to date, both operating and administrative, and we need to continually strengthen our governance effectiveness and productivity. A new action that comes out of this priority is the establishment of a stewardship committee to oversee the entire grant-making portfolio of Arts Culture Kataba. This initiative is being chaired by Jamie Treadaway on our board. And we are also refreshing our fund development structure to grow investment in arts and culture as a whole. And this is being co-chaired by both Kitty Barnes, who serves on our executive team, as well as Dean Proctor, who helped us to get this cultural plan up and running. If we are successful in all areas of this fourth priority, then Arts Culture Kataba is going to be widely known and respected as a valuable community resource. We will also be recognized as a valuable community asset that is foundational to community livability and vitality. And we will have increased investment that fuels cultural plan success and sector sustainability. Arts councils like Arts Culture Kataba do contribute to vibrant, healthy communities and maintaining quality of life. So ensuring our success is critical to ensuring the success of this plan's priorities, which just, again, really quickly are to expand awareness, reach more residents through strategic partnerships, continually improve arts and culture offerings, and build capacity and investment in the arts and culture sector. So to further solidify this effort, we have endorsements from key community leaders, including Mayor Gess and Councilwoman Williams, who believe that this plan has the potential to favorably impact the quality of life for all residents, enhance the livability of our communities, attract and keep residents here, entice visitors, which will all thereby contribute to Kataba County's vitality and prosperity, certainly the city of Hickory's. We are excited to be entering, as I mentioned earlier, the early implementation stage. So I mentioned that central information system. So our priority right now is to become the source of entertainment and events in the community. So we're building out our networks and resources right now, and we look forward to sharing that with you in the future. So thank you for your time to share the cultural plan. We did provide you with a handout that will take you to the more detailed version, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay.
Okay, I don't have a question, but just being part of the process, it was an enormous undertaking. And for you to be able to work through that huge process in that short timeframe and come up with four priorities, I thought that was incredible. So, thank you, and hopefully it will result in just a better coordination, people being attracted to our city, as we're seeing through the economic impact study, to live here.
This is a really exciting time to, I think, be living here in the city of Hickory, to be a part of this organization and bringing forth these new initiatives. I think that really a lot of our, all of our cultural organizations are buying into it. So we're hopeful that residents will continue to. I mean, getting 2% of our population, I will say, white women in Hickory really showed out for this survey. That was probably the greatest number of responses that we had. But overall, the city of Hickory in general did show out. We had at least 2%, I think, in the city of Hickory zip code as well, of our residents. So that shows that the city of Hickory does value arts and culture and its importance. We know the economic value, but you know, also those other things, the other pieces that arts and culture can bring. So we're looking into some really exciting things that we can do to move it forward.
Thank you, thank you, Ingrid. I just want to point out a couple of things that maybe she didn't mention. Oftentimes, and I'm sure the other council members hear the same thing, not only from the folks that live here, but particularly to the newcomers. And I'm oftentimes surprised at the research that people do before they move Hickory, and they're amazed at the opportunities that we have here in Hickory, North Carolina. Of course, most everybody in here is familiar with the Salt Block and all that goes on there. And of course, I thought that Ingrid would mention this, but since she didn't, I'm going to. I'm going to plug it. March 1st, Virgil Ortiz, his work has been at the Smithsonian Institute in Denver. He's been in Miami and Los Angeles. And now, his work is on display here in Hickory. Do you want to elaborate on that just a minute?
Yeah, it's at the Hickory Museum of Art, and they're open tomorrow. They're not open tonight, but you can go check them out tomorrow, starting at 10 o'clock. Yeah, Virgil Ortiz is a futurist and also a pueblo Native American, and he is a potter. But he also approaches pottery in a really innovative, creative, modern way that can be a good way to introduce, I think, young kids to the world of pottery. And there's also, I think, another really exciting thing is he wanted to make sure to acknowledge the land that Hickory is on, which is the land of the Kataba Nation originally. So there's also a collaboration with the Kataba Nation, and you can meet some of the, you can view the images and read the stories of some of our Kataba Nation potters as well, and some of our Kataba Valley potters, like Kim Ellington. Michael Gates is also on display. So really, a really just beautiful tribute to one of the reasons we changed our name, which is culture. Culture acknowledges the tradition bearers and the people who make our community have color. And so I think that's a, you know, really important thing that that, yeah, the exhibit at HMA is doing right now. So lots of great things going on, though, Hank. I can't even just mention one. But I'm glad that that one touched you.
Well, and I had the privilege last week of judging some of the talent of some of our young folks from our local schools. So that's an annual event. But like you said, there's too much to mention. But we do appreciate everything that both of you do for our community and the involvement of all the volunteers and everybody that's involved in the arts and culture. And we look forward to support and continue to support arts and culture in Hickory.
We appreciate the support from the city of Hickory, so thank you.
Thank you, Ingrid.
Thank you, girl.
All right. I did want to mention, I almost forgot it. Councilman Seaver did join us for the record. I knew that he was at Kiwanis, is my correct? I knew that he would be here, and he didn't disappoint. So for the record, Councilman Seaver is with us as well this evening. All right. As far as I know, we don't have anybody that has signed up to address the council this evening, but we certainly want to give you that opportunity. If there's something that you would like to bring to our attention, we will allow you to be able to do that. All we ask is that you approach the podium, that you state your name and address, and that you limit your conversation to three minutes or less. So at this time, I'll ask if there's anyone present in the audience that would like to address the council this evening. It doesn't appear to be anyone, of course. We make ourselves available. You can contact us most any time. Next item on the agenda is item number six. It'll be the approval of our regular meeting from February the 18th, 2025. All right?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That carries unanimously. Item number seven is our reaffirmation ratification on second readings. Once again, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That also carries unanimously. Item number eight is our consent agenda. I'll ask if there's any member of staff or council that would like to have any items removed from our consent agenda this evening.
Move approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and several seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor of... All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? The consent agenda carries unanimously. We don't have any public hearings this evening, but we do have a departmental report, and to introduce our departmental report, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Mayor Gess, members of the city council, Mr. Swanson. The one-staff report tonight is an update on the update to myhky.com, which is a marketing tool that the city uses, and it will be presented by Communications and Marketing Manager Dana Cominsky.
Good evening, mayor, council, Mr. Wood, Mr. Swanson. Thank you, first of all, for letting me have this opportunity to present to you the new myhky.com. I'm going to show you a website that we are so excited to be launching, and as you might remember, it came a little while back and presented myhky.com, but it was a 360-degree interactive virtual tour. It still is. That has not gone away, but we are now showcasing that wrapped within a website. So in speaking with Mr. Beasley, our boss, we had looked at some other communities and regional and state websites that were being used as recruitment tools. And after numerous discussions, we determined that we wanted to also build a website to go along with the myhky.com tour. And this process began for our staff in August of 2024, so we've been hard at work working on this. Our communications team, who are all here tonight, Mr. Beasley, who is also here, along with assistance from Dave Leonetti and Amy Lee, we all started communicating and determining how we were going to build a site like this that only cost us staff time. We did this all in-house with our team. We had also had meetings with Scott Millar, with our Catawba County Economic Development Corporation, and of course, city management for review and feedback. So the tour is still an integral piece of this site, as I have mentioned, and it is showcased on our homepage, which I will show you in a minute. But now we have created this entire website to tell the story of Hickory and our Hickory Metro. We plan to share this with our local and regional partners, recruiters, HR departments, schools, and the realtors, and anyone else that would like to share it. This site includes many links to our partner sites, like Arts Culture Catawba is one of them. So we aren't recreating what they do, we are just sharing it. We want this to be a one-stop source of information for attracting people to the Hickory Metro for business development, talent attraction, overall living, working, and visiting Hickory. So I'm going to stop talking about it, and I'm going to actually show you some of this. So drive this right here. As you see, this is our homepage with beautiful pictures of our area, and this is where our tour lands, right here, front and center. So you could still fill out the form and hit start the tour, and it'll take you into that 360-degree virtual interactive tour, which I will encourage you, if you haven't had time, we did do an entire refresh of that within probably last year or so. That tour was built about six years ago, so it's amazing how fast time flies when we're having fun, right? So here's the tour form, and you could fill that out, whether you're visiting, wanting to move here, build a business, or start a career. And then you will receive information back from the city, from individual staff. It looks like it's coming from each one of us, because it is. We've crafted messages that go back to people on each of those categories, and that's working really well. We have some nice statistics and information that are front and center for people that are new to our area and don't know these things. Of course, we have our video by Chip Wade, who also built the myhky.com virtual tour, did some nice videos for us, it was last year, and we have posted those right there, front and center. You can follow our social media, and then, of course, you can always get to the tour right here, or you can contact us, which then also goes to our Office of Business Development. You can craft your home, your visit, your career, your business, or your education. Those are all the tabs, and then, of course, the virtual tour at the top. I'm going to go quickly through this, but I want to again encourage you, plus my little icon, encourage you to go and look at this when you have some time on your own. Again, statistics that Dave and our Office of Business Development pulled together, and Amy, that are really good against our national averages. Everything is, we are better than the national average or equal to, as you see in food. Things to do, that takes you to a place on our website that we already have. A lot of these things were things we already had created, so we linked to them to just enhance that information. I'll show you. Things like this that's on our current hickorync.gov website that people can get to anyway, even if they come to our government website, but this is just a way to connect some of that information back to the new site. I don't have a driver's license for this yet. There we go. Neighborhoods and doers and makers. So Neighborhoods goes to a place on our website as well that lists all of the ones that are recognized neighborhoods, and then we have a miscellaneous other that you can also see apartment living and different things like that, for those people who are not familiar with our area. Our doers and makers, these are great videos of some local people who are doers and makers in our community, a lot of business owners.
Owners everywhere are.
Didn't want to go there. There we go. So you could click on that. Jay Brown just happens to be featured right there, but we have Zach Cranford and some others also, so feel free to watch those videos. They talk about Hickory, being a business owner in Hickory, from their perspective, which we think is the best coming from a third party. Hickory Trail, of course, one of our major highlights. We don't want to have people not see that, so you can go straight to our Hickory Trail website page as well, and get information on each one of the walks that have been built so far. Craft your visit. Again, we're not trying to recreate a will. The Convention Visitors Bureau does this perfectly, so we are just going to connect to a lot of their information. Get to know Hickory, that's actually on our website. There's just a lot of information you could find there. Things to do, same page that I showed you before. Downtown Hickory, this will take you to our page, which will then take you to the Hickory Downtown Development Association, and information about downtown Hickory. Destination guide, which is new today, we just found out, so the new one is posted right there. Visit Hickory, which is the new brand, and their Instagram feed, because again, they're our visitors bureau, and they do it really well, so we want to make sure they're recognized there. Make a trip to Hickory. Again, they've created some beautiful day trips, so for a visitor, they can click right there and go straight to the Convention Visitor Bureau site and get that information. Trailblazer, this is some information we just wanted to show. I mean, if you live in Hickory, you're not just going to only stay in Hickory ever, right? You want to go to some other places around us, and these are some nice places that are not far from us that we are highlighting. Of course, there's many other things as well. The Hickory Metro blog articles, or hosting a sporting event, touching on our sports tourism, of course. Myhky tour, so you can get to the tour there, the Hickory Trail, and then visit Hickory is Arts Culture Catawba. Go straight to you guys. Craft your career. So first and foremost, city of Hickory job opportunities. Always want, always want to make sure that we're highlighting what we have available here in Hickory, at the city of Hickory. We have top industries in the Hickory MSA. You can get job resources like NC Works, NC Careers, and Explore 64, really great sites. Explore 64 is part of the K64 program. They handle that site, and it's a nice tool that they're working on and continuing to create, so I think that's going to be a nice piece for this site as well. Major employers. So we have a list of all these employers that link directly to their job links site. So if you're looking for work, these are some of our biggest manufacturing or industry or companies, and you can click, and it'll take you to where their jobs are posted. Hickory for Vets, I'm sure most of you know Hickory for Vets, so we wanted to make sure that was included as well. Craft your business. Again, very important for our Office of Business Development, where of course, we're highlighting Trivium, and then some really great statistics. Did you know that 2 million people live within 60-minute drive of Hickory? I think that's a great statistic. Of course, Dave and his team helped pull these together, and Amy, 176,000 spend at least 30 minutes in the city limits every day. I think those are important pieces of information for people who are looking to build a business here. Of course, a wonderful video put together by Amy Lee in our Office of Business Development, just a short one, talking about business and how you can work with us. Again, touching on the doers and makers and business owners right there. You can experience Hickory. I'm not going to click on this and go through this, but this is a really nice piece. There's a pitch book that we have now. It's on our Office of Business Development page, but it's also hosted right here. It's a selling tool for Hickory for business development. So there's some really nice information in there, some really good pieces, quality of life, that we can use to give to people who are looking to build a business here. Dave and his staff do that in the Office of Business Development. We also talk to our commercial airports and all of our airports around us, of course, Hickory Regional Airport being front and center, but it's nice for businesses to know how close they are to all of these airports. Starting and owning a local business, that connects back to our Office of Business Development page and information that we already have out there. Just one little piece above it. So there's a form, if I can move it up. Oh, missed the whole section. So there's a section here with links to our EDC, the Chamber, Catawba County, SBTDC, all of our brochures and information about how to start and own a local business, and then there's a form here that if you fill this out, this goes right back to the Office of Business Development, and somebody can contact you. And I think we got our first one today, Amy shared with us. Craft your education. One of our employees highlighted right there, front and center for us. So we have, again, we don't want to recreate the will of what is out there. They do it best, so, well, maybe you want to see the tour. Hold on. Sorry. I'm doing it with two fingers. I don't have a mouse. So we have kindergarten through 12, links to those schools. If they are a high school, if they will, a private school, high school, they will be listed on there. Private schools, community colleges. Now again, we did not just list CVCC, even though we know they're important to us, we also listed some in our region around us as well. Universities, of course, and then workforce development, there's a lot of links there as well for all of CVCC's workforce development programs. So again, this is a very quick overview for you to just get a feel of what this new site is. Again, our tour is such a huge piece, and we market this and use this as a tool for our marketing purposes all the time. So take some time, browse it, let me know if you have any questions here or later as well.
Any questions for Dana?
You want to introduce the folks over your right shoulder that worked on this?
Sure. I'm proud to do that, because this was a huge team effort. This is not about me. So Sarah Killian, as you all know, who's here. Patrick Taber, our one and only webmaster, who actually behind the scenes built the entire thing that we had a vision for. Kayla Melendez, I will just say mostly, she has a title, but graphic design, photography, videography, all the pretty things that are on there, Kayla helps design that as well. Sarah helps me with pretty much everything. And then we've got Dave Leonetti and Amy Lee right here, the Office of Business Development, who helped us with all the data and statistics and all the placer data that we have. And then, of course, Mr. Beasley, who had the brilliant idea and helped us motivate us to make this happen every day.
I think Councilman Seaver has a question.
Yes, Mr. Seaver.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I was speaking with a friend of mine who lives on the eastern coast, and he said he's looking to retire somewhere in North Carolina, and he said Hickory is at the top of my list right now. I told him about visit myhky.com.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yes. That's the thing, we can send this type of stuff to people who, the tour especially, if you're not from here, you can click on that, and you can get a feel for some of the area and what we have. So this is just a nice enhancement for the selling and attracting talent piece to our area. So thank you for that. Any other questions?
I don't have a question, Dana, but obviously, this is a tremendous resource, and you can tell that it takes a lot of time and a lot of talent to be able to put this together, and not only to be able to put it together, but to keep it up to date. And as Ingrid reminded us while ago on that survey, 40%, I believe it was 40% of the folks said that, you know, they didn't know exactly everything that was going on and where you could go to find some of that information out. So this is a, perhaps this is one answer to how we do that. I just want to applaud you and your entire team on such a tremendous thing that you're giving to our community, and I think that it's going to continue to grow, and hopefully folks will find out about it, and we can certainly share it. And I think that probably you'll see other communities want to copy what we're doing, and they'll come to you all for the expertise on how to do that, so thank you. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I also want to say shout-out to our IT department, because they help us build this on the backend, that they don't get this, you don't get to see that, the servers and all the things that we had to host on, so we appreciate the support behind it.
And I think I'm correct when I say this, when you dive into it, it's actually more than what you've been, what you've, you've given us the highlights kind of, but.
I'd keep you here for an hour if I should do.
Yeah, as I recall, is there a place where you can just click on like little flags at different locations, and it takes you there?
That's the tour.
Okay.
So if you go up to virtual tour, I won't go through the whole thing, but if you click virtual tour here or on that front homepage.
Right. You can pick a specific location.
Yep. It's not letting you scroll it, but if you click the X, it'll take you, as you see it's rotating behind it?
Right.
You can click on the flags, and they'll pull up all those locations. There we go.
Right.
Yeah. So you can click on any of the little arrows, there are pictures, there's 360s, you can rotate this and look at all kinds of links and videos.
Well, I just wanted to highlight to everybody here that there's more to it than what you showed, so please don't just think that's it. Go look at it and explore it and see what all.
And that's our whole region.
Right. It's not just Hickory. Yeah, it's the whole metro.
And it shows that we're an hour from Winston, Charlotte, Asheville, and Boone, I think, and we have 360 degrees of each of those cities as well. So this tool has been amazing from the beginning to do, but now, six years in, we've said, let's make it even better. And it was great alone, but now with this website, I think it's going to do a great job.
Do you know of any other city that has this, or are we, is this very?
So the tour was Johns Creek. Johns Creek, yeah. They were the first ones. Chip Wade actually lives there.
Okay.
And built that, and that's how Karen Dickerson actually helped us find that and brought that to the Office of Business Development, and then we worked with Chip to build this whole entire thing from the beginning. That's the only other city that I know of that has anything like this.
It's really, really impressive.
Great job.
Thanks to everybody that had a hand in that.
Thank you.
I'm real impressed with it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. We don't have any other departmental reports. We've got appointments to boards and commissions, so I'll ask if there's anyone on council that would like to make any appointments to any of our vacancies on boards or commissions this evening. Does it sound like it? You can peruse that, and if there's something that you're interested in, certainly reach out to one of us. Looks like we've got a opening on the Public Art Commission, and there's others on there as well. So we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have concerning those appointments. Any matters not on the agenda, sir?
Aye, sir.
Okay. Any general comments? Anybody?
I have two. I want to, the 2025 Women's History Month Celebration, our very en vogue Fox is being honored as a woman who makes a difference in our community and around the world, and so that is next Thursday at Ridgeview Library. So she is certainly be committed for everything that she does in our community.
What time?
6:30.
6:30.
And the other is, there was a ribbon cutting today at CVCC for the Valley Data Center, which is sponsored by Microsoft, which it was amazing, the number of servers, computers in there, that this is going to be a class or a medium that you can go through and then get certification. It's not just Microsoft certification, it is recognized all over the world for data. So that was an exciting thing. They had lots of executives from Microsoft here today and from the North Carolina Board with IT, so it was another good thing for CVCC and our community.
And I'll just piggyback, last night, we were at a reception because Microsoft actually donated to sponsor an exhibit at the Science Center, and we were out there, and so they're really making an impact since coming here.
Plenty to do. Any other comments? I'm not going to go into any details, but I just want to say thank you to those of you who's reached out to me this week with your prayers and concerns. I greatly appreciate every one of them. Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right. I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.[1782.03]